You're not gonna turn on your Christmas lights for effect, Scott?
What's that?
You're not gonna turn on your Christmas lights for effect?
No, I'm hunking down these more. I had a glaring yesterday afternoon this morning, the sun. Yeah, those gotta come down. I can if you'd like, but.
Rebecca, I'm going to start the meeting. What would you call the district attorney? He's gonna be up shortly, and I don't see him on yet. So gentlemen, my show is eight thirty. I'm gonna call into session the Hancock County Commissioners' January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one special commissioners meeting.
I'm gonna move to approve the agenda as presented.
Was there, was there anybody? Did you have any adjustments you wanted to make, John?
Nope.
Motion made and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor, Commissioner Wambach?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
The agenda is in order. Looking at our agenda, we'll start with public comment. Is there anybody else here this morning who would like to make a public comment? Hearing none. Motion in order to accept the previous meeting's minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of January fifth. All those in favor, Commissioner Wambach?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. Is our, good morning, Abby.
Oh, yeah.
Good morning.
Are you going to represent Matt this morning?
Um, we may. Let me just check really quick.
His items are pretty straightforward. Abby, I don't see if he's critical to the meeting, but if he'd like to join, of course, he's welcome.
We have a lot of prisoners this.
You're holding them near your office, you mean, or what?
No, it's just Matt's helping with them, so it's
I see, sure.
Very busy.
Okay, Matt, he can come whenever he's ready, but I want to proceed. Item A on the district attorney. Gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
I'm gonna move to accept the resignation of Abby Dow effective May second, or March second. I was trying to give you a little longer. March second, thank her for her tenure and wish her the best of luck.
Thank you.
Second the motion.
Motion made and seconded. Yep, we're gonna, we're gonna be sorry to see you go, Abby.
Thank you. I'll miss the people here.
Yes.
Don't be a stranger. You know where we are. Okay. We have a motion made and seconded on the floor. All those in approval, Commissioner Wambach?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. Motion carries. Item two. What's your, please, gentlemen?
Move to advertise for an administrative position in the DA's office.
Second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, Commissioner Wambach?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. Item C, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve the upward transfer of Becky Sutherland to Legal Secretary III at grade step six D effective January twenty-fifth, twenty-one.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Rebecca, have you reviewed this?
Yes, I have. Yep, it's all in order.
It's all in order. Gentlemen, any comment? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, Commissioner Wambach?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. Abby, anything else for your office this morning?
No, I think that's all. Thank you very much.
Okay, we wish you the best.
Thank you, Abby.
Thank you.
We'll move now to the airport. Good morning, Leroy.
Good morning.
We have been provided with a copy of the notice from our attorney to Silver Airways. Gentlemen, do you have that?
Yep.
Yes.
John, have you seen it?
Yep.
Is there any questions with regards to that? And for, for the record, that basically is demand from our attorney for the outstanding thirteen thousand some odd dollars that Silver Airways owes the county.
So that's getting sent out, or it already has been sent out?
It already has been sent out. I got my copy sometime over the weekend.
Okay.
You know, the action we took last meeting provided for that, so there's no action needed on this, right? This is just information?
Yes.
What's, what's the next?
They have until January twenty-seventh to pay up. And then the next step will be exploring the collections and filings.
Under small claims?
Yeah. I think it's large.
I was gonna say, it sees small claims.
Yeah, yeah. And it will have to be filed in Florida, so it'll take a little bit of work. But we hope the letter works.
Their court's not that backed up, yeah.
Would you say, Scott?
I said hopefully their court system isn't as backed up as ours.
I wouldn't be surprised. It's worse than ours, considering the situation down there.
Well, and plus, both of them to respond in some way to this, because it's gonna get expensive for them.
Yep.
Right. Agreed. That's all I had. I just, it was just a little bit of information that.
Okay. Thank you, Leroy. And if there's nothing else, we'll move on to the jail.
I got nothing.
Morning, Sheriff.
Good morning.
Is Tim on this morning?
I am.
Should be.
There you are. Good morning, Tim.
Morning.
You have a request regarding accruing comp time. Would you explain what that is, Tim?
What we have is Assistant Jail Administrator and the Administrative Assistant would be on call from five o'clock Saturday morning until the following five o'clock Saturday morning, a week at a time. And they accrue sixteen hours of comp time for during that period. Right now, we're running without an administrative assistance, and I've been filling in for the weekly on-call. And I'm requesting to gain that comp time while I'm on call for that weekly process. When I'm not on-call during the week, any phone calls I get, it is what it is, but just when I'm on-call from for the seven-day stretch, I like to accrue all that same comp time that we afford the assistant and the administrative assistant when they're on-call.
So, Tim, right now, you only get eight hours, is that right, for?
If I cover, yes, if I cover a weekend, yeah, when I cover weekends, but when I'm doing the whole week, I just look into gain that with also with the ability to sell that back as, as they do.
Yep.
So, once, sorry, I'm so green, but when you don't normally stand what I'll call duty, right? It's only because we're short a person?
But it's really, if I may interject, Commissioner, it's one of those things that unfortunately, he's in a position similar to myself and chief deputy that were kind of technically on-call, you know, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. You know, they had currently been reimbursed when there were three people that were taking call, one every third weekend. They were reimbursed at eight hours, but now that until we fill that administrative assistance position, someone who can take an on-call weekend. Tim and Frank have been taking a week at a time, so we're asking for the extra five days, actually, that he be on-call to compensate him with an extra eight hours. So he was being compensated, as the other two were, for eight hours for being on-call for the weekend. Now we're just asking for another eight hours to cover those five days that he's, that he's filling in.
Okay, but once you fill the position, that disappears.
That's correct. It'll go back to the way it was. That's right.
Rebecca, have you examined the request against the present personnel policy or the contract?
I looked at the personnel policy to see how it would work with that, and I sent you the two sections of the policy that I think would apply in this. You know, should maybe factor into your thinking. This would be outside of it, but it's really outside of, you know, it's really outside of a typical, typical situation anyway. So I mean, it isn't in violation of anything.
When I look at, when I look at the first of the two sections on page thirty-four, it, it states the jail duty officer. And that's not a position, that's, that's a designation. Correct? You understand the difference? Is that correct, Tim?
That's, yes.
We don't, we don't have a jail duty officer. What that is, is that's a designation to an existing position based upon their duties, right?
Right, for that, for a week at a time, yes.
So my question back to Rebecca is, couldn't we consider Tim the jail duty officer for the week under this section and compensate him at the, at the two without setting a precedent for, for our policy?
Yes. Yes, we could. Um, yes. So this is a little bit, I, so, Tim, you were just asking for comp time, right? This, this paragraph also allows for hourly compensation if you're actually called in.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the hourly compensation if I get called in. I'm not worried about that. I'm just worried if I get called in, that's, I feel that's part of my duty. If I gotta be here, I gotta be here, but just to be the on-call status, I was just seeking that that part of it.
So I'm just trying to figure out a path forward. You know, I support this, but it's, we've got to, it seems like there should be some other document that we can formally approve. Is that, is is that, is my thinking right, or do we? I guess I'm trying to, Scott, I'm asking for, you know, what the path forward is.
Yeah, you want like a, just set up a temporary agreement?
Sheriff, you have a comment?
Could we classify this as a stipend? We've given stipends to a lot of people over the past and stuff, and that is compensation we set at comp time.
Well, I'm trying to use the existing policy so that we don't have to make an exception. And
Calling it a stipend be an exception? I mean, we
Well, it, it, it would be, there's no reason according to Rebecca that we couldn't simply acknowledge the fact that Tim is the jury duty officer and that as a result, he gets two days of compensation. The problem is that we need to make sure in that motion to approve that that we make an exception that he doesn't receive a cash equivalent for coming in. So.
So I'm wondering if this is sort of a path forward, is to, is to support in concept, you know, what we've discussed here and asked Rebecca, Scott, or who, you know, sounds like probably Rebecca would be the one doing it, to draft a, a simple agreement. That way, everybody's on the same page. Tim knows what it says, and we know what it says, as opposed to, to just with a voice motion. Does that sound like a prudent way to move forward, or no?
Well, I suspect if we're going to have a document to take action on, that we should have just by general consensus, we tell Rebecca to draft an agreement between the county and the jail administrator that provides him for two days of comp time for every week that he's the jail duty officer, period. And we may want to clarify that, that he doesn't get additional compensation for coming in, for on-call, coming in. Rebecca, you understand what we're asking for?
I do. Do you want a time period on that? Do you want that to go?
Yeah, it should be until the administrative assistance position is filled and they assume the duties of the jail duty officer. Correct, Tim?
Yes, and I hope that's just gonna be another couple of weeks. That's, that's all it is, I hope.
Good. I hope so, too.
Do you want that retroactive or just going forward?
Have you been the duty officer yet, Tim?
Last week I was, it was the first week, yes.
And that would show up on this week's payroll?
Yes.
Then I would like to see that retroactive back to last week. Gentlemen, are you okay with that?
Yep. I'm gonna second that motion.
That's, that's not, no, it's not a motion. It's by general consensus so that Rebecca understands the document to draft that we can vote on officially. If that's okay. I'd like to see the document before I vote on it. So by general consensus this morning, Tim's been granted that retroactive to this last pay week. Rebecca will draft that, send that to us, and at some point in the future, we'll draft that. I will take that up and take action on that. Is that okay?
And the sheriff?
Sheriff?
Yeah, I'm just gonna say, should we include Lieutenant Shepherd in that as well, because he's doing that this week, so that we don't have to address it again?
Well, he's, isn't he, isn't he one of the duty officers?
Yeah, he is. So you're gonna word it so that it would include him. It's not gonna be stated specific to jail administrator. It's gonna just say the duty officer. That's the term we're gonna use.
I think he, he already gets it, doesn't he, Tim?
That's correct. So this just, this document's just gonna be addressing my position temporarily while I'm filling in.
So he, he's already getting this. There's no, there's no need to get him involved.
I just wanted to know if you wanted to clarify it that way, so.
I think, I don't think it needs clarification. We're not, we're not excluding him from what he's already getting now, so. So gentlemen, by general consensus, Rebecca has an understanding of what we'd like to see in a document that permits us to approve the request by Tim Richardson, okay?
Yep.
I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing further, your medical assisted treatment update?
That's going well in the House. It's going very well. The only issue on update you want is that last week, I spoke with the facilitator for the state, and our payments have been delayed. They're having an issue with funding right now, and they say the funding's gonna be coming through. And I would just, right now, finances are set that we can continue. I've spoke with county manager, and we do have funding right now. We're not, we have a balance. I like to continue this as is, knowing the meeting, the payments are gonna be forthcoming. But also, keep an eye on it. If we get to a point that we start running into a looking like when we run out of funds, I'll bring this back to your attention. I just want you to know that right now, we have been delayed a couple payments.
Okay, thank you for the Sheriff.
What's, just out of curiosity, what's, what's the total dollar, do you know the total dollar amount there behind, payments?
I want, that's around fourteen thousand. I think it's seven thousand a month, I think.
Okay.
Something like that, so.
Alright, thanks.
I'm gonna move to accept and file this report, because I think, you know, there's some money attached to this, so I think it's good to have this on record.
Was that a motion?
Yes, please.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded to accept Tim's report, reference the medical assisted treatment contract. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Commissioner Wambach?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
And I am myself. Motion carries.
Paul, do you want to, what, Paul, I know you, did you want to have the airport record of the, of that Silver Airways letter part of it, or no?
I didn't, because we had already taken action to do.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
Now, even if we don't accept the document, that is part of the, the minutes, at least. You, you put that with the minutes, correct, Rebecca? That letter from the attorney?
I can. I don't typically quit supporting documents as part of the official record unless, unless they're, you know, they're, unless there's something specific that requires that, but I can do that.
We'd have to go back then to, to Leroy to get that document then, if we were looking through the minutes?
Um, well, I would probably have it filed here somewhere, but just not in an official capacity.
And we'd have it, we'd have it in our com dot, or, you know, in the, in our, in our file that we have access to.
Okay. Okay. Sheriff, go ahead. I'm sorry, I've been trying to get you.
No, 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 no. I don't want to interrupt, but I just want to add a little bit more about that medical assisted treatment. We have, when we made some changes up there with, with an organization that we were working with, we lost our recovery coaches. And we asked Gordon Smith from the governor's office to supplement the monies that we had, because when we submitted the original grant, we were working with that association of that group, and we didn't need the funds to pay for recovery coaching. So we've been several months without recovery coaches. And we now have, I had a conversation with Ryan Anderson, DOC, and Tim has found some certified recovery coaches, but they come at a cost. After speaking with Ryan Anderson, he says that we can use our, our inmate benefit funds to pay that fee, what it would cost us monthly, and it's around a thousand dollars a month that it would cost us. And we're gonna do that. As soon as we get this, we'll line up and we'll put together a contract and send it to you folks. But with my goal being that when we reapply for our next year's grant, we will add in that, and hopefully that will go through. But what concerns me is what I mentioned the first time when we accepted this money, is that I think a lot of us know that when we start dealing with the state and the federal, we, we jump on these grants and we do it, then all of a sudden, the funding's not there. And that's what concerns me with this fourteen thousand dollars, or whatever it is that's due to us, that they don't have the funds. Originally, when we started the MAT program, Mr. Smith said that if you need more money, call me. Well, I called him several times, and he didn't have any more money, so just making you aware that that may be a cost, that we may have to make a difficult decision, whether we're gonna be able to fund that in the county budget if the state does not fund us anymore. So it's really, it's really a moving target, but we will be reintroducing recovery coaches into the jail, and we will be funding that with monies out of, out of the inmate benefit funds. And why we are allowed to do that is because of all the programming that we have currently. To add recovery coaches, that's above and beyond what we would need to do statutorily. And that allows us to use that benefit fund money, which directly benefits the inmates. So I just wanted to bring everybody's attention on that as well.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion on the floor that has been acted on yet, Rebecca? Motion to accept that, did we vote on that? Motion to accept the report, Tim's report?
Think we did, but I
Yeah.
We did, okay.
I'm not positive, but I think we did.
Okay.
What about the decision, Chair? What about the decision on, on the support moving forward? Is that in the acceptance of the report? You're gonna consider that one of the same?
Oh.
Was there a question that?
Well, the question is, is if we move forward and we, and we extinguish the funding,
Well.
and you're gonna wait and report on that later and ask for permission?
Yeah, I would say
That would be a couple of months worth.
When we, when we, we'll all work together, and we feel like we're getting critical, we'll bring it back to the commissioners and make a decision at that point on what we want to do, but it sounds like we should be getting the funding here before long, but I just wanted to let you everybody know we're behind a little bit, and we're just monitoring it closely.
Yeah, that, that's what I took your, the last sentence in the, in the second paragraph to be that, you know, if we needed that, we would address it, then, is that? Yeah.
I'm good, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on then to maintenance, if the jail's all set. Morning, Dennis.
Good morning.
You have a request to advertise for a full-time janitor, correct?
Yes.
Gentlemen, we approved Becky Sutherland to go to the district attorney's office. Is that the vacancy, Dennis, that we're trying to fill?
Yes, it is.
Okay, gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
So moved, moved to advertise for a full-time janitor.
Second.
Move, motion made and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Commissioner Wambach?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. Dennis, anything else for maintenance this morning?
No, thank you, man.
Moving on then, discussion with regards to Eastern Main Development Corp. Asking us for a board representative.
Yes. As instructed from the last meeting, I inquired about whether they'd accept me as the, as your representative, and there aren't any issues with that. They again wanted me to relay to the commission that there are other commissioners that serve. I think I put that, like to Scadquis County, and Upstate County, Waldo. Matter of fact, I think the chair, Mr. Shory, from Waldo. So that's all I got on that.
Well, as I've said before, because it's a conflict, I believe it's conflict of interest, and, and if I was EMDC, I would want commissioners on this in hopes that it assures future funding, but I think that's improper. I still object to having a representative on EMDC board, and even if it was our administrative assistant, I would object to that. I don't think we should be getting onto boards and then advocating for them getting funding from taxpayer money. What do you want to do, gentlemen?
This one's a little tough for me, because I, you know, I agree that we should have a representative there. And I like the idea of, of having Scott Atkins there. But I, I certainly understand your point, Mr. Chair, because I, you know, I'm not comfortable with, you know, sitting on a board and you know, then sit, moving over to another chair to ensure that that board gets funding. That, that's, I, I think that's your point.
It is my point, but also, Paul, you need to understand some history here with me and, and third-party recipients. I've often referred to this group as a club, that's, once you get into it, you know, it's like the mafia. You can't quit. Nobody's gonna throw you out either. And I, I really have a problem with some of the entities that are being funded from taxpayer money, especially those that rely on contributions, and we're telling the taxpayers, we're gonna tell you who you're gonna contribute to. So anyways, I have a, I have an overall problem with Department Seventeen, and this is just another irritation on that list of problems I have with that. So you really need to act, you and John need to act on the, the best interest of the board and EMDC, if you believe it's, it's contrary to my beliefs, but I'll, I'll respect whatever you gentlemen want to do.
Well, and another one of my problems, I'm, I'm from a ten-thousand-foot level, I sort of understand what EMDC does, but I, I, I can't say that I'm familiar enough with it to, to you know, have a strong opinion in one way or the other, but generally, I agree with your position.
I'll be honest, I think we're kind of making more out of it, making a problem out of something that hasn't ever been a problem. We've had a commissioner on the board all these times in the past, and I just kind of feel like there really is, it really isn't. If we're kind of making an issue out of something that really isn't an issue. It would really be Paul that would probably be the person that would be the commissioner, since that was the spot that Commissioner Blasi had held before. So in a way, I think it's kind of up, a little bit up to Paul. If he's comfortable doing it, I would, I would support him being the the representative for it.
Yeah. I guess I'd be willing to do it, but it, it, it would be tough. They meet during the day, right? And it, it, it would be very tough for me to do that. I kind of like the idea of us being a little removed from it, from, you know, by having the, our administrator there, but you know, there's some ups and downs. There's some, you know, and consistency. I like the consistency of that. I don't know, my two cents. Be tough for me to, that would be, they meet what, twice, uh, once a month or twice a month?
Is there anybody here this morning from EMDC? Yes, Sam, good morning. If you done muted?
Good morning.
Really? Who would like to speak on behalf of the board?
Susan, is John Farley planning to attend this morning?
Yes.
So I'm not sure. I came in during the middle of the conversation, but there appears to be a conversation regarding a commissioner from Hancock County participating and being a member on the Board of Directors for EMDC. So they're looking for somebody who has experience with the Board of Directors that could answer questions.
Correct.
Okay, great. So John is, is supposed to be on this call, and he should be, he should be joining any minute now. I would recommend wait till he joins, because he's the only one who can really speak for the Board of Directors.
Well, we have a
How often is the board? How often does the board meet?
Once a month, I believe.
Oh, there you go.
And I think it's the third Thursday of the month.
And what time of day, Joanna?
Um, you know, I, they usually, when they were meeting in person, they, they had lunch, so it generally was like from 12 to 2.
One o'clock, yeah, and John is joining right now.
John Farley has just joined the call, and John, just to bring you up to speed, there's been a conversation taking place around Hancock County, having one of their commissioners participate on Eastern Maine Development Corporation's Board of Directors. So there was a question about how often do they meet, and I answered once a month. I believe it's the third Thursday of the month.
Correct, right.
What time do they meet, John?
It's usually 11 o'clock, 11 to 1.
And elsewhere?
Well, actually, we've been doing it on Zoom for the last year, so until we get to a point where we can have in-person meetings, they typically are in Bangor. And the county, the commissioners are represented from all four counties, off, yeah, including Waldo County that represent EMDC's Economic Development District. So it's Waldo, Hancock, Penobscot, and Piscataquis Counties.
Well, one of our concerns that we've been discussing, I don't know if you're aware of this, is, you know, we, we're a little worried about, you know, EMDC gets funding from the county, and to have somebody who's making the funding decisions, sitting on the, the board, who's asking, you know, is potentially, well, not potentially, it comes pretty close to the definition of a conflict as a counselor, as a commissioner. So, you know, that's one of our concerns, you know, because you're, the person sitting on the board is asking for money, and then, you know, that commissioner just moves over to, to his regular chair and approves that money. So that's, that's amazing, that's a concern for at least two of us.
Yeah, Mr. Parity, I think that that's the case of all, all of the four counties, there's, and this has been a historic, you know, arrangement where the counties provide a modicum of funding to EMDC. So I will have Lee Humphrey, the President and CEO of EMDC, respond to you about that arrangement. I think that when it comes to those sort of issues, I know that most people would recuse themselves from participating or voting in those situations, but I'll have Lee reach back out to you to, to talk to you about your concern.
Yeah, and, no, I understand the person would need to recuse himself, but, you know, on a three-person commission, that's, you know, that, that's, makes it tough on the commission, that's, so that, that's, that's my concern.
Understood.
I can tell you, historically, they've never recused themselves, and it hasn't simply been set dues, in other words, an amount that everybody pays, and, and it was, was no discretion. I don't think this would be an issue. It's the fact that EMDC requests, you know, not an amount, and that is deliberated on by the three commissioners, one of which has always been a, a member of that board. I think that's, and the fact that everybody does it doesn't make it right.
Yeah.
You know, the other three counties may, may do that, and, and nobody recuses themselves, and, but that doesn't mean that it's still not worthy of that debate on whether or not it's a true conflict.
Well, and, and, you know, another reason why I like the administrator, I would feel uncomfortable, to be honest. You know, at least the administrator, he's not here, you know, voting on, on, you know, on that amount. So I, you know, I think that just cements my, my thought. I, I don't have a problem with the administrator at this point, but I would have a, you know, it would just put me in an uncomfortable position if I was there.
Understood. We will certainly follow back up with you immediately to address your concerns. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
The only thing that I just wanted to say is, so I kind of get what you're saying, Paul, about Scott doing it, but I also want to watch out about throwing Scott one more meeting that he has to attend. So that's, that's my whole thing, too, is like, I mean, I don't want to keep, I mean, he's, he's running the show as it is, and, I don't know, I just want to watch out about putting too much on his table that, but it is something the commissioners can do for a couple hours a month. I kind of think that's part of our job.
And I don't want to continue to sound negative and whatnot, but having Scott in that position, to me, could be even, could even further my argument, because Scott is the one who basically assists the department heads in, you know, creating the budget that we first consider. And so his suggestion to us on how much money is based upon some determination that he makes, and so he really stats with that, which, you know, there we go again. You know, the person sitting on the board is the person who is suggesting to us that we consider this amount in support of that, which is conflicting for me.
Yeah, that's a very good point. And John, your point's very well taken, too. It's, it's always easier to throw, and, and, you know, a manager or administrator into another role, eventually they're doing everything but what they need to be doing, so. Point well taken.
No problem.
So do I understand we're not going to take any action on this today? Is that correct?
I'm not ready to, because I, you know, I, I have, I have those concerns, and I'm not sure that, that they've been addressed. I mean, I'm pretty familiar with, you know, the, some of the laws surrounding this, and I see, I see a clear conflict sitting here right now.
Okay, so let's, let's leave this issue then with not taking action. There could be further considerations at future meetings, okay?
Sounds good.
Okay. We have a designated nine o'clock presentation by Joanna on her program in the jail. So gentlemen, if we could go back and turn the meeting over to Joanna. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. First, I want to say thank you very much for allowing us to come and provide you with an update of information. And I just want to clarify, I'm, actually, when I'm speaking, I'm speaking on behalf of the Northeastern Workforce Development Board. And what we're doing today, we plan to do in front of all five counties, the commissioners. We want to provide you with an update on the workforce system in Hancock County, and that will include the National Emergency Grant and the work that we do with the ex-offenders coming out of the jail and reentering into their communities. So that's a part of it. What I'll do, I'm just to give you kind of an idea of what, what I'm doing right now, I'll provide you with an overview of some of the activities happening under the Board of Directors for the Workforce Board. And I'll turn it over to Ben Hawkins, who is the Workforce Board's Program Coordinator, doing work with businesses across the five counties in relation to the National Emergency Grant that we were awarded to that, to address the opioid crisis. Once Ben Hawkins has finished, he's going to turn the meeting over to, the presentation over to John Farley with Eastern Maine Development Corporation, and we have the team of folks who actually have boots on the ground in Hancock County. So I know that John and Susan Serini will provide you with a program update. Now, so that you know, the Workforce Board contracts with Eastern Maine Development Corporation to provide services and resources to job seekers and businesses across four counties, Penobscot, Hancock, Piscataquis, and Washington County. So today, our focus is on Hancock County. So just a quick update on some of the Board of, the Workforce Board's activities. First thing I wanted to just update you on is I have been working with the Workforce Team, including EMDC and Arustic County Action Program, and the Maine Department of Labor. We developed a series of videos to put together for a special report with WABI, and I did send this information, so you don't have to remember it or take notes. What's happening is we have, excuse me, the first video that was developed included a young woman from Arustic County who established her recovery and entered part-time employment. She's currently attending the Washington County Community College Enrolled in Substance Use and Recovery Certification Program, and she's hoping to become a Certified Alcohol and Substance Abuse Counselor. The second video that we worked on was featuring Katie McKay, who's a peer connector. She works with Eastern Maine Development Corporation's National Emergency Grant Project, Connections with Opportunities. Katie shared her story as a peer connector working under the Opioid Crisis National Emergency Grant. The third video features Kim Moody and her supervisor with Athena Health. Kim shared her story as a woman in recovery and her challenges in obtaining employment. The fourth involved a mother and daughter talking about their recovery together and how being a family member can also impact somebody, that the opioid crisis can impact a family member and/or friends. And then the fifth video, we invited Susan Mingo, President of Washington County Community College, in to, to discuss activities supporting individuals in recovery on the community college campus. President Mingo also discusses the process the campus is going through to become a certified recovery campus. The series was taped during November 2020, and the videos are all going to be combined to complete a special report, which is due to be aired on Tuesday, January 26th, and Wednesday, January 27th. We also have been told that the sister stations, TV stations, WAGM in Arustic and WMTW in Southern Maine are also going to air the special report. Moving on, I just wanted to update you that USDOL did visit in 2020 to review the workforce programs and budgets and finances. During their review, they visited two of the three local areas. The northeast is one of three areas, then we also have central western Maine and then southern Maine. And this year, it turned out that USDOL reviewed southern Maine and central western Maine, and they'll save northeastern for their next trip here. The National Emergency Grant, Connections to Opportunities statewide, is currently under-enrolled and underspent, and I think it's important to, to know that while we were awarded the grant dated December of 2020, we didn't actually get the grant or the funding until March, the end of March 2020. So we're still working to bring everything up to speed. The good news is, I say this with a lot of pride and gratitude to Eastern Maine Development Corporation and Arustic County Action Program, because in both the Formula Grant, Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, and in the National Emergency Grant, our service providers are actually serving more than 50% statewide. So that's something to be very proud of, and they continue to do the work diligently on the ground to connect job seekers with employers. And then, moving on to the local area, we did conduct our program monitoring with program year 2019. We, we reviewed files and conducted interviews with participants across the five counties, and I'm pleased to say that there were no financial issues. Eastern Maine Development Corporation and ACAP have done a fabulous job. So we had just minimal, like, areas of concern where there were some data or information missing, and we didn't quite understand, and we're working on to resolve, we're working on resolving anything like that, but it's very minimal.
Joanna?
Last, yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
You said that EMDC has served more than 50% of the participants in the state. I don't understand that statement.
Okay, statewide, we have a certain number of people that we have served, and then when we break it down into each local area, what I'm telling you is that across three local areas, Eastern Maine Development Corporation and Arustic County Action Program, because we have one service provider that serves Arustic. In our five counties, we're serving the greater number, we're serving over 50%.
Of, of all the participants in the state?
Right.
I see, okay, I got you. Thank you very much, sorry to interrupt.
You're welcome, that's okay. Last, what I wanted to provide you with an update on is the work that we're doing with businesses, which is really new. We're working with Rob Brown, Director of Business Ownership Solutions. He is working under the Cooperative Development Institute, CDI, and they're continuing to provide training to our partners across the five counties. And what they're doing is training the partners to work with businesses who are planning to retire, business owners with small businesses, medium-sized businesses planning to retire, and they don't actually have a, a plan. What they, they do is they close their door and they lay off the people who are working for them. What we're hoping to do with Rob is to pull in a portion of those business owners who are planning to retire, help them to understand that there's resources and options for them to actually keep the door open and possibly sell the company to their existing employees so that they can keep their jobs. So this work is happening. I know of one just recent success story where a company did actually choose the option to keep the door open. And that work continues to happen across the five counties. I think that the stronger portion of the work is really, right now, training our partners to understand what options and resources are available to provide to businesses. So that's kind of where we are in the project right now. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ben, and I just want to say that once East, Eastern Maine Development Corporation has finished, we'll certainly remain here to answer any questions that you might have. So with that, Ben, I'm going to turn it over to you. Oh?
I just, I'm just, I just need to remind you that Commissioner Parity is new to the board this, this month.
Okay.
And I just want to make sure Paul understands the program, that, you know, the, the details of the program that you provide. Paul, you okay? I know there's a lot of acronyms and a lot of, lot of service agencies here being reported, but are you okay so far with understanding what Joanna's program does for us?
It's kind of hard to grab in one month, I'll tell you. I, just to give you, I honestly, I will tell you, it takes about six months to get it. The, the, just the scaffolding of our system, the Workforce Board is one of three in the state of Maine. The boards receive the contract for workforce development, and we contract, we have to procure the contracts, and Eastern Maine Development Corporation and Arustic County Action Program, EMDC and ACAP, were awarded the contracts under the Northeastern Workforce Development Board.
Which is funded, which is funded by the state and federal government.
Well, the state acts as a pass-through, so the funding we work with is under the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, and you'll hear WEOWA. WEOWA is the acronym, and that's probably the most used acronym across workforce. So it's actually federal funding that comes through the state. Yes, you're right. Once the local Workforce Board gets it, we then send 90% of our contract, 90%, goes out to our service providers, and the board keeps 10% to conduct, to conduct oversight. We have to monitor and make sure that our service providers, EMDC and ACAP, are in compliance with the federal law. And I also- And I also work with partners across the five counties to create a strategic plan to effectively serve businesses and job seekers across the five counties. So it's the board, the workforce board, Northeastern Workforce Board, and then it's the service providers, EMBC and ACAP. And they have a much broader, I think, system of employees who are working one-on-one with job seekers. So I know John and Susan plan on introducing their career counselors. We want you to kind of get a sense of what that looks like. So it's EMBC that will today talk about the actual boots on the ground and what's happening with job seekers and businesses too. At the board level, we're charged with making sure to convene businesses, and Ben is going to share, still on behalf of the workforce board, a couple of projects that we're working on today. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ben, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Joanna. Good morning, everyone, and again, thanks for having us. I'll try to be brief, because EMBC, they've got a great team here, and I want to give them as much time as possible. I've got a PowerPoint just to show, just to help me frame what I'm talking about. So I'm going to share a screen now. Are we seeing this?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. All right, so like Joanna was just talking about, EMBC, they have the large portion of the funds for this opioid grant, the Connecting with Opportunities Initiative, which, in short, is a program to help people who have been out of work for some time or are a dislocated worker, get back into the workplace. And the special thing about this grant is it's intended for people who have been either directly or indirectly affected by opioid use disorder, or for other people who have not been affected by opioid use disorder, but have an interest in training, job training for a field that would help people affected by opioid use disorder. And EMBC, they're the ones who are helping those individuals and everything like that, and so they can touch upon that briefly. And that's the big part of the Connecting with Opportunities Initiative. That's the formal name of that program. But the board is also doing some extra work to really supplement those efforts and to really engage the community businesses and community leaders on talking more about recovery. Substance use disorder and the opioid crisis have obviously hit our state very hard, and we hear about those issues regularly. But unfortunately, recovery, which is a critical part of the solution, doesn't get a lot of time in the limelight. So a lot of what the board is working to do is to help adult educators and other workforce development partners, as well as businesses, understand recovery better, what it means, what it doesn't mean, and how to support people in recovery so we can help get past this crisis. We have two tools to primarily do that. The first one is Recovery Coach Basics Training. This is a five-hour workshop for individuals who just want to learn the basics of, well, coaching individuals in recovery. We have three offerings last year, and you can see all the counties and organizations and adult educators that have been present for those. And we have some more scheduled for this year as well. This workshop's great. I participated in the last one in December, and that one was when we had a lot of different adult educators there from all the different branches. And during the introductions, one person said, like, "I know I work with people in recovery, but I really don't know anything beyond that. I don't know what that really means or anything along these lines." So this workshop is a great opportunity for me to stop and think and talk about this with my peers and really to get to unpack what recovery really means and what's my role in supporting that individual. So this is a great opportunity, and this Recovery Coach Basics, this is our tool primarily for our workforce partners. The other tool we have is Recovery Works For Me. This is a workshop that we've designed. This is a brand-new workshop that we've been designing with the Bangor Area Recovery Network. This is somewhat similar to the Recovery Coach Basics Training, except this one is designed with employers in mind, talking about recovery and how that applies to the workplace. Since this is newly designed, we had two offerings, we call them pilot offerings, last year. Thirty-four attendees, they were very well-reviewed. Most, almost everyone said that they would recommend it to a colleague, which is very exciting and very encouraging. And we're continuing to fine-tune it to make sure it's the best workshop possible. And so we have one more offering scheduled for now, with certainly the intention of doing many more in the future, February 26, 2021. For both of these workshops, the Basics Training on the previous slide, as well as this one, we are certainly open to anyone who's curious about it to attend. There really are no barriers to entry, except for an eagerness to attend, and especially with Recovery Works For Me, it's certainly an engaged workshop, where all the participants are certainly encouraged to get involved and have communication and conversation, and that just makes the workshop that much better. Looking into 2021, these are some of our bigger goals. One is further engaging the media. Joanna mentioned that WABI series that should be airing this month, and we're looking to do more things like that, which is really highlighting the success stories and understanding that folks affected by opioid use disorder, substance use disorder, that recovery is a big part of the solution and that there is hope, and many people do recover. We're also looking to further engage with businesses and certainly using the chambers of commerce more to really rely on their networks, to help spread the word about recovery and our workshops and other great messages that we have. As always, the board likes to have representation at community partner meetings to help collaborate. Just a few of those in the slider listed. And then lastly, one thing we, the board is responsible for is service provider monitoring. Again, for Hancock County, our service providers, EMBC, and the board just likes to do some, in short, quality control. Make sure that it's money well-spent, that the programs are effective, and that the individual participants are getting value out of the program. We're actually undergoing monitoring as we speak, and I've had the opportunity to speak with a number of participants. I've only heard amazing things. It's amazing how much this program really changes people's lives, and it puts them on a different track, you know? A lot of stagnation before EMBC is in the picture, and then once they get in touch with EMBC, a lot of things start moving, and then six months later, they're in a totally different position in their life. It's fantastic to hear, and it's great to hear EMBC's making that difference. Speaking of EMBC, outreach. EMBC does a ton of outreach, and specifically for this opioid grant, this is a sampling of the region-wide outreach that has been done in the last quarter, from September to the end of December in 2020. These are all the individuals that our service providers and the board have had meaningful connections with, talking about this program and sharing information. As you can see, it's over 1,000 individuals have been touched, and certainly more since the end of last year. And it's great to know that there are so many people that, while they may not be enrolled in the program, and they do know that these resources are out there, word of mouth, and it's really critical, again, for that, the whole reducing stigma and giving a sign of hope, to let them know that there are these great programs that help people out. So that's all I have here. I'd love to, I'll stop my screen share, and I'll just pass it over to John Farley of EMBC, unless there's questions.
Okay, well, thank you, Ben. Just wanted to quickly give you an update on our programs. And I've provided you both a narrative overview of our services during 2020, as well as a performance report in terms of the outcomes of the programs based upon national performance measures that all of the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act programs are measured by. I broke these down by specifically for Hancock County residents that we've served. I just want to make a comment about the Connecting with Opportunities Grant. That particular grant is a national emergency grant. It's statewide. The original program design or proposal design was developed by Eastern Maine Development Corporation in large part, based upon the experience that we had working with the Hancock County Jail over the last couple of years in a project that was actually funded by you folks to help us and others in the community work with folks who were transitioning from incarceration back into the broader community. And so this whole project, in large part, is an outgrowth of that original project that we, along with the workforce board, did in Hancock County. So I just wanted you to be aware of the genesis of that large project, which is over $6 million statewide. So kudos to the county for supporting that effort. In the last year, EMBC has operated the programs in Hancock County from our service center, which is located at the Mill Mall in Ellsworth. We've been located there since 2009, operating these various programs for job seekers and businesses throughout the county. I'm going to introduce our staff in a second, just so you know who's actually providing the services and connecting with the community and partners throughout the county. But in the last year, EMBC has served, in the WEOWA program, we served 65 individuals, which is, interestingly, the exact, almost the exact same number we served in 2019. The difference is that almost for the past nine months, we've been operating the program remotely. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we have not been able to meet with folks in person. We quickly, in March of this past year, moved all of our programs online, sort of recreated on-the-fly our service delivery model as to how we outreach to individuals seeking services, how we provide those services, and how we maintain a counseling relationship with folks throughout the term of their enrollment. So it's been a whirlwind for us, trying to reinvent or re-engineer how we provide services, as have a lot of other organizations across the spectrum of education, training, and social services. So I think that, given those circumstances, we're quite pleased with the results and the efforts of our organization and our partners to continue to serve people throughout the region. Over the past year, EMBC actually services Washington, Hancock, Piscataquas, and Prescott County under these programs. So Hancock County represented 18% to 20% of the total number of people that we've served across those four counties this past year. And the results of the program, if you look at the performance report, the one-page report that I provided, the results that folks achieved as a result of services are quite impressive. We measure on a regular, on a quarterly basis, we measure things like employment outcomes. Do people obtain employment after they leave the program? That's measured both six months after they leave the program and 12 months after they leave the program. And then we also measure earnings. Basically, there's a median earnings measure for all of the programs. There's also a credential rate measure. So if somebody is enrolled in a training program, say they enter a welding program at the community college, and did they receive a recognized credential for that training? Essentially, did they complete the training and get a credential that they can take into the labor market to enhance their employment? And then, fourthly, there's a set of other measures in terms of skill gains while people are in the program. So all four of those indicators, all five of those indicators are measured on a quarterly basis. And so for Hancock County, the folks who completed the program in the past year and a half have achieved quite high results across the board. Actually, some of the highest results in the four counties that we serve in the northeastern region. So we're quite pleased with that. As far as a national health emergency grant goes, we've been basically enrolling people in this project since June of this past year. I think the report that I heard this morning from staff is that we've served 72 people as of today in the grant, which is the highest number, actually, in the state among all of the service providers and workforce boards. So we're quite pleased with that. I think that that's a result of the work that we did with the Hancock County Jail last few years. I think we have a really good handle on the types of issues and challenges that people have coming either out of incarceration or folks who are in recovery from substance use disorder. So I'm very pleased with the way we've been able to connect people to resources and help them move further along in terms of education and training. I'll stop there, and I want to introduce Susan Serini, who is the Director of our Workforce Services across our service area. Just parenthetically, I'll just mention that in the past six months, EMBC as an organization has also begun to offer services for these programs in Central and Western Maine. So at the present time, our service delivery organization stretches from Washington County all the way to Anuskaugan County and west to Oxford and other Franklin County and a lot of other places and communities across the board. So Susan's done a great job of welding together our programs across the nine-county service delivery area. We're pretty excited about that. So Susan, maybe you could introduce folks and talk a little bit more about our programs.
Absolutely. Good morning. Thank you for having us here today. You'll see in the email that Joanna sent, there is a narrative, there's information in there. But just real quickly, some things I want you to take away from today. Our services, like John mentioned, you know, in the last year, we've all been going through change. A lot of difference in the communities that we're in and what people are going through, which I think is why our services are even more important right now, to help job seekers, to help businesses fill those roles, to help people still find, you know, that bit of hope that there is people out there willing to help and ready to help. So the services we provide in Hancock County have always been really, I think, robust. Like, we've always, we've had an office there. We really have great partnerships with the community colleges, with adult education especially. So we're really connected to the communities throughout Hancock County. That's really important in the way that we deliver our services, because working together is how we provide that success in the end. You'll see Sam Gaius and Loretta Alley are both on this Zoom as well. And Loretta has been serving Hancock County for many years. She's worked with the big dislocations that have happened. She's worked with partnerships. She's just very well-known in the work that she's done and has done a great job. And like John mentioned, which I think is really good to repeat, is that, you know, the National Emergency Grant that we have statewide is really, you know, a lot of what Loretta did with Hancock County and with all of you in the partnerships is the reason that that grant came about, and it's the reason now more people are being served. So that served as a model in the way that we deliver our services for those affected. Those are incarcerated, those are in recovery. So I think that's really important to re-know, because that's where it started. We felt really good about the work we were doing. We were really passionate about that, Loretta's work she did on the ground, Sam's work as well. Sam was with EMBC prior, working in our youth program, and then for a period of time, worked with the Hill's House. So she had a lot of community involvement too. And when she came back to EMBC, she brought that back with her, with the skill set that she has. So I think the two of them together are very powerful on the ground. So I really want you to walk away knowing that, you know, the work that we do is very important to us. We're here to really help in that we do meet people in person when needed, but we have been able to accommodate and adapt to the way that life is right now with the virtual services. We've done virtual workshops, so those virtual workshops now reach anybody anywhere. So even though our office was in Ellsworth, we still could reach anybody throughout Hancock County. So I think that's another important piece. What I'd like really quickly is just, I'd like Loretta to just, if she doesn't mind, we had a recent success that I think highlights some of the work that we've done. And if she wouldn't mind sharing that, it is in your narrative. But I really would like, from her perspective, because she worked really closely, she's had a lot of other successes. So if she wouldn't mind, I would like to kind of end with that and anything that Sam would like to add. And I think it's important for you guys to know these two names, because they're the ones that are on the ground and right there in your county every single day.
Thank you, Susan. When Sam was at the Hill's House and I was doing the recovery project, I had the great, I did an eight-week workshop with the girls in the house and the people in the jails. And one of the girls in the house was very passionate about her recovery, and she really wanted to move forward. So at the time the Hill's House closed, we kind of lost touch with her, and she went to Southern Maine to finish her rehab. Well, she's back in Hancock County, and she is now enrolled at Eastern Maine Community College in Mental Health and Human Services, and we have provided her support services, adventures, and a computer, and help with childcare, and she's doing a fantastic job. And she's doing a fantastic job. And Sam might want to speak a little bit about her too.
Sure, yeah, thank you, Loretta. Just to say Hancock County is really important to me, it's where I grew up, it's where I have my home. So the, the residents here and businesses are incredibly important. This young lady has come such a long way. And by taking advantage of this opportunity, and, you know, may not, her not being maybe able to have this is, is so important. And it's important for everybody that we're working with. So thank you for having us today to talk about this.
I wanted to mention real quick, another success story that I had, that a young man that I had when I was in the Hancock County jail. When he got out, he had experience as a cook, but he didn't think that was the best environment for him. So I was happy to set up an on-the-job training with a local HVAC company in Hancock County, where he got six months of on-the-job training and is now entered East Main Community College to get the classes he needs to get his journeyman license. So that was another success story I'd like to add.
Thank you, Loretta and Sam, and to everyone. And I guess the last thing is just to know, like, we're here, if you have, you know, if you talk to businesses or you're meeting with individuals, you know, there's a lot of partnership that goes on. We can work, you know, on the, like, on-the-job training, like Loretta mentioned, help both the business as well as I'm an individual. So there's a lot of opportunity there and a lot of opportunity to collaborate and work together.
So I just want to, in closing, Commissioner Parity, it's, it's an opportunity to also state for you that we're directed under the federal law and regulations to serve individuals who are not ready to go back to work. These are individuals who don't know what they want to do, and if they do know, they don't know how to get there. So it's important to understand, our mission is to get people back to work in a job that isn't just a J O B, but it's something that matters to them, so that they'll stay there and they'll work, and they will become self-supporting and not have to rely on public assistance of any kind, including unemployment. We also serve dislocated workers. So that's, I want you to understand that. When somebody knows what they want to do and they just need funding, they, they don't qualify for our program. We, we serve people that do not have the means to get from point A to point Z. That's what we're all about. So I just wanted you to understand that. And last, commissioners, we are proposing that we come to you every quarter and update you. So if you would like, we would be happy to come the first part of April, just to update you on the program in Hancock County, if, if that, if you approve of that.
Give us an example of what that update would include, Joanna.
Yep, it's, today, we've provided you a stronger sense of what we're doing in the whole program. It, it would be, so from today forward until April, we would provide you with additional numbers, additional projects happening within the five counties or unique to Hancock County. But that's what we would do. It would probably be about 15 minutes or so.
Yeah, because I'm an advocate of more frequent, shorter updates that keep you connected. If they, if they get too long and there's, you know, you sort of lose track. And I think that helps somebody like me with a learning curve of this.
You bet.
Okay, Joanna, does that conclude your presentation this morning?
It does.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Always glad to hear from you.
So they've given us, you know, some material here that I think it's important. So I'm going to move to accept and file their reports.
I second that. Motion made. We're talking about four documents here, Paul, but stapled together or not?
Well, there's actually, it's three documents, right?
There are matrix, it's the last of it.
Yeah, there's a, the north, there's a northeastern workforce development, there's that matrix. There's the, the report that actually, geez, if there's four, I missed one.
I think there's the PowerPoint presentation would be the other.
Oh, that's correct, that's correct. I'm sorry, I forgot about the PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah. Okay, so if we understand what we're voting on, gentlemen, that motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor of the motion, Commissioner Warrenbecker?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity? Commissioner Parity, you in favor of the motion?
Yes.
And I am myself, motion carries. Joanna, again, thank you.
Thank you very much for having us. We hope to see you soon. Thank you.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, I want to take up one more item, the discussion on the 2020 revenue. And I'd like to take a short break, and then we'll have a 10 o'clock hearing on opt-in, opt-out. Is that okay?
Yeah, do you need action on the 11 o'clock one to continue that, or?
The Okay, okay. The issue here, gentlemen, is that I just received a request from the sheriff, who has received a request from the Union Secretary to continue the termination hearing that was set today for 11:00. And, John, that individual is still out on pay. But Bakoni stated that he has just received some of the documents that he should have had or would have liked to have had to prepare. I'm not sure that we can deny this request.
That's fine.
So I think he's asked that we consider having this on February 2nd, which is our regular meeting. That makes for a very busy day, but
Is that, you know, again, I'm very green here, is that just a tactic to buy some more time? Or is that a legitimate?
Well, I think it's, I think it's a legitimate, I think there was a document that he did not receive, for whatever reason. So I just spoke to him on the phone and asking that we, we hold that request until the second. So I, I don't think there's any games or anything being played, Commissioner, and I think it's legitimate. And I think to take care of our case, I think we should, I would request that you would honor that.
Okay, so so moved, so I'm going to move to continue the 11 a.m. executive session to February 2nd.
Second that. I will, I will tell you that I think this request should be considered, but I always have the problem that if an employee knows that they severely screwed up and they're going to get terminated, it's in their best interest to continue this for as long as they can if they're being out on pay. So I think the word needs to get back to Bakoni, that we're going to hear this on the second, regardless of what's going on. We're not going to, we're not going to let this languish for weeks on end, so.
I already made him aware of that, Commissioner. We had, we had a fair lengthened conversation and said that we had it set up for here. And there was, for some reason, something, some wires got crossed here between he and I, and he's well aware that we'll take care of it.
And if Joe is here, I'd tell it to his face, Joe, this is typical of waiting till the last second, you know, to take action like this. We, you know, a little more notice wouldn't have hurt today. So, gentlemen, if nothing further, we're going to act on the motion on the floor. All those in favor, Commissioner Warrenbecker?
Yes.
I, Commissioner Parity? And I am myself, motion carries.
And you're going to have that discussion at 10 o'clock about the marijuana issue, Commissioner?
Yes, we're going to have a quick discussion on the deeds revenue. We're going to take a quick break and come back at as close to 10:00 as we can for the opt-in, opt-out discussion.
And just to make the board aware, that our executive director has had, has been ill and is unavailable today. So I think I relayed that information to you.
I don't know if you were privy to the conversation earlier, but it appears it's a, there's a development that doesn't require us to opt in for medical marijuana. So this may be a short hearing. So anyways, let's, gentlemen, direct your attention to the information provided to us on deeds revenue. The only reason I wanted that, because it was substantial. And, and just a quick discussion with Scott on, on how this might help us at the end of the year, considering the significant increase. So Scott, why don't you take this discussion real quick and fill us in on that?
Yeah, so obviously, I mean, this, this kind of has developed over some last several months in talks with Registrar Curtis in deeds. And, you know, it really became interesting, and I can see why, you know, she would just shake her head. I mean, they, they've been absolutely swamped. And as you know, we brought in Southern to help out, and the commissioners obliged that request. So I think the bottom line is, if you look at it, if you understand what I sent earlier, essentially deeds is looking at at, on the surplus side for this year, about 270, just a little over $277,000. And if you look at some of the numbers, I mean, she's going to, she's basically doubled, more than doubled her budget for transfer tax alone, and fees were up over $77,000. So I was just looking at, in the other sheet that I sent you, was just a spreadsheet that I, that I did up to look at some of the averages. The last six months, she was averaging over 36, almost $36,700 per month. And, and her normal average, that's about double what, obviously, what her normal average is. It's more than double. So she's been busy and productive, and really has helped the county's bottom line, which I'm hoping after I'm all done sorting through things, that you're going to see, you're going to see that improvement.
Has the staff been able to handle it all right?
They've
Julie, are you on this morning?
I'm sorry? Oh, she is on there, yeah.
I'm looking for Julie, see if she's, she's on. She's muted.
I'm, I'm here.
There you go.
Oh, there you go.
Tell the story better than you.
John's question to you, Julie, was, how's the staff handling the increase in, in workload?
We're doing our job. We're very tired, Billy. But, you know, we're handling it. I mean, that's, that's what we do. But, but, yeah, we're tired because we've been shorthanded and that type of stuff. But
Well, Julie, you've had individuals working from home, you know, through COVID. You've had individuals out as a result of, you know, COVID and schooling issues, staff changes, as we're all aware of. So, yeah, I think, I think kudos to deeds for what they've been able to accomplish here this last, especially this last six, seven months.
Well, and I think, you know, this is just a, we should be proud of, this is indicative of the healthy economy we have in Hancock County, and hopefully that continues. I mean, that's a direct, that is a, a direct measure.
Yeah, Julie, would you mind taking a couple of seconds, are you still there and talk about, like, what we talked about, like, what you might expect for the future?
Sure, sure. I, I expect that for the first three months, that with the interest rates low, that we still should see a lot of mortgage refinances, because they actually haven't, the, the refinances aren't as abundant as they should be right now because of the purchases, and people are having to wait like eight weeks for an appraisal. So as long as the interest rate stays low, the mortgages should be carrying us. But, but in all honesty, we're getting, getting our fair share of deeds in January. I mean, the, the money is still coming, so, but I do expect that that's going to change pretty, you know, in a few months.
So back on the revenue, Scott, what was deeds' total revenue projection for 2020?
Well, the budget was 185,000.
And what do you project it to be?
She is at almost four.
Almost 400,000?
Yeah, hang on, I need to be exact. 385, 229.
385? So that's a couple, that exceeds the budget by a couple hundred thousand, correct?
Yeah.
Yep. With all this bad news, that's good news to hear. And you know, Paul, to your comment and whatnot, I was talking to a car dealership the other day here in Ellsworth and whatnot. And, and for those businesses, especially those on the island that require, you know, that, that are suffering because of the COVID, car sales and real estate sales have been exceptional. And it's just, it's so odd how this COVID affects different businesses. But this particular dealer said back in March, they were 40% down. And by the end of December, they had made that up and, and plus more. And so it's, it's interesting how some businesses have fared well during the COVID and others, of course, are suffering terribly. So that's interesting. Well, gentlemen, that's good. If nothing else, I'd like to take a five-minute break, if that's okay with you. Julie, thank you for attending this morning.
Yep, before Julie disappears, I have one more little stat. She, of all those numbers, they did almost 60% of that business in the last six months. So it wasn't just that it was, it was a busy last six months.
Yep.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay, gentlemen, we're going to stand in recess.
That's good.
Miller, does it appear you're waiting for anybody?
Leber and Heinrich haven't logged on yet.
Okay, I'm not going to hurry us, we'll, we'll wait. Hi, Mary Ann.
You know, you'll always be Sheriff Clark to me, right?
Oh, I do see that.
I can, I'll, I'll try to transition to Commissioner, but thank you. Good morning to you. It's nice to see you.
How you feeling?
What, what was, somebody earlier said, upright and taking nourishment. I, I think as good as I can hope for after the last couple of weeks.
Oh, okay, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Wish you the best.
Well, I'm on the other, other side of it. The whole family had it, so we were in isolation together.
Did the grandkids have it?
No, it was my husband and my 16-year-old daughter. So we just hunkered down and, you know, tried to take care of each other the best we could. And brutal. But if you've not, I do not recommend. No, do not avoid it at all costs.
Okay, Mr. Hedrick is, is there now? Somebody else, Miller?
The applicant was online earlier, but I don't see him. Oh, there he is, okay.
Yep.
Hi, David.
Good morning.
Ah, you would be the subject matter expert. I'm glad you're on. You can probably answer any questions I cannot, so.
Well, excellent.
Good morning.
Happy to help in any way I can.
Nice to see you again, Naomi from the E M D C.
Okay, I'm going to call our meeting back to order. Commissioners, you ready to go?
Yeah.
For those people attending this morning, that request, thank you very much. There appears, though, to have been a development that we were unaware of from some of us until this morning, and it had to do with a fact sheet Miller provided with us. And the part I'm referring to is Title 22, Section 240, 2429D, that says the statute doesn't require the opt-in requirement procedure for unorganized territories.
For medical.
For medical. And by way of background, Steve, how do you pronounce your last name? Was it Becker, Becker? Steve, are you with us?
Yeah, it's Barker.
Barker. Steve Barker was the primary purpose for having this in, as he was requesting a medical marijuana site to be located in the township he, he does business in. What's that, 22, Miller?
Yes.
20 township, 22. Gentlemen, I think maybe we need to refine what our purpose is this morning with regards to this meeting. And I say that because we have the ability to opt in on retail cultivation, processing, and testing for adult use as well. Are we prepared to discuss any of these other alternatives to see whether or not we want to take action? Are we prepared to discuss any of these other alternatives to see whether or not we want to take action on those?
Well, one of the points was that we um. When we kind of, the subject got brought up a couple of years ago, is well, why are we talking about it if we don't have any requests, right? So we've had a request for medical, which we don't need to do an opt-in on because it's not in our authority. They're just gonna go directly to the LUPC from what I understand. Um, and we don't really have a request of somebody wanting to start a retail establishment. So, I'll be honest, I'm kind of uh of the mind that. We don't make a decision on the on the retail on retail or the cultivation, really anything, because we don't have anybody trying to put one of those requests through.
Well, so if we waited, if we waited for that adult, for the request for adult use. Would we have a public hearing every time we had a request, even if we decided to opt out?
I see what you're saying.
But I'm of mind this morning, especially given the resources we have with us, that we might want to have at least a discussion on the implications of adult use. And uh. Maybe even take a uh take action on whether or not we want to permit that in the unorganized townships, one or more or all of them.
Cameron Clark?
Yes.
Um, I tend to agree with you. I think we've got three experts here who've been uh kind enough to join us this morning. We should at least get as much information as we can, because I'm sure this is gonna come up again.
True.
And as I understand that. Um, the only action that needs to be taken is if we decide to opt in. If we do nothing.
Right.
Okay, there you go.
And and none of and none of this is really relevant relevant to medical. Um, is that, as I understand it, that's, is that correct?
When you say none of it, what do you mean, Paul?
We can't opt in our, we can't opt in on medical marijuana, uh, because that's not part of our purview.
No, we're not required or authorized.
Yeah.
Uh, but with regards to adult use, you don't have to opt out. But it is a form of opting out if a motion was made, seconded, and if motion was on the floor to opt in, and that got defeated. You understand what I'm saying? And I'm suggesting that if ultimately we wouldn't opt in, given all the information we've got. That perhaps that needs to be taken now to let prospective. Um, merchandisers in the future future know what our position is.
Thanks, sir.
So anyways, let's uh let's start this morning. My first question is, and and Millard, I'm gonna ask you to help me facilitate this because I'm not quite sure who this should go to. So I'm gonna put. Put these to you and you direct it as you see fit. But my question, first one is, is that if. We opted in for all of the unorganized territories for adult use. Would, why would there be a need for medical use? If you don't, if you can buy it anywhere you want or an authorized. Part outlet, why would you need to have also? Do we understand my question?
Are you asking me, Sheriff? I couldn't tell who you were asking.
Well, I'm I'm gonna give everything to our UT director, Millard Billings. Ask him to direct those questions to the proper. Resource, whether it be David, Naomi, you, or whoever that should be.
Um. I can't answer that, but I'm not sure who could, whether it's David or Naomi or Mary Ann. So whoever can answer it, please do.
Well, David, let me ask you directly then, if if we opted in for adult use in the unorganized territories. Isn't it, isn't it unnecessary to have a medical outlet?
Not at all, actually, Chair Clark. Um, so the city of Maine has two distinct programs, as as you've covered already. We've got a medical program and an adult use program. And we have entirely separate operators in both. Sometimes there is overlap where you have an individual who is both registered with the state's medical marijuana program. And is also going to be licensed with the Maine Office of Marijuana Policy. Uh, but the thresholds of obtaining a registration in medical or a license in adult use are entirely separate and distinct. Um, operators in one or both can't operate in both, essentially. And by that I mean, and I'm sorry if I wasn't articulate enough, but. We have like a prohibition on co-location of retail establishments, as an example. But if you were an operator in both programs, you could cultivate in the same facility, provided that you end up keeping your. Um, inventory separate, and it's clearly delineated. Uh, but when it comes to either patients in the medical program or or adult use consumers in the recreational or adult use program. Uh, you have a situation where they're taxed at different rates. Um, and in one, as an example, in the medical program, you could watch, walk into a dispensary or a caregiver retail store. And you could buy a product that has significantly higher THC concentration than you might be able to buy for an edible in the adult use program. Because we have a ten milligram active THC limit for individuals serving in the adult use program, but no such limit exists in medical. Uh, similarly, there are certain products that are available in the medical program. That may have a higher CBD to THC ratio, meaning that they they prioritize the non-psychoactive compound or component of the cannabis product. Uh, versus what you might see in the adult use program, which generally leans towards uh those recreational consumers that are interested in getting. The psychoactive high that comes from THC. So the simple answer to your question is there is a purpose for both programs. The products um available in both programs vary. And the individual operators in the program can choose to be in one, the other, or both programs.
Thank you. That that certainly clarifies that. Steve, did you? Did you understand that you did not need Commissioner approval for a medical use facility in Township twenty two? That you could go right directly to work?
Well, actually, after that last meeting, um, I called the OMP, the Office of Marijuana Policy, and they said I was going along the right path. They said that in order to get medical, you still needed to have opt-in by the commissioners. And the the grace period for being grandfathered into a medical license had already passed. That was one person that I spoke with at the OMP.
Now, I I'm I'm seeing David looking with puzzlement over that comment. Uh, David. Uh, please respond.
Yeah, I I apologize for you, Steve, getting, you know, misinformed information. Um, you know, that's certainly regrettable and certainly nothing that we want to um. Provide is we're trying to provide the best customer service that we possibly can. Um, and so be happy to follow up with you after this meeting to to better identify who may have provided you that information. And so that we can take corrective action necessary on our part to make sure that there are no future impediments for you or others that may be in your similar situation.
Steve? Steve, at one point, I in one email, I thought you had quoted me that you would talk to someone from the LUPC that referred you to the commissioners.
Yeah, I spoke with, I think her name was Jean Flannery, and she said that I. She said she was gonna put in an application to Augusta to try and get our um, the license started to Augusta. But she says it's most likely gonna be denied because it needs to go through the commissioner's board. So it wasn't like a definite, she seemed like she may have been a little bit um not clear on the law as well, possibly.
Steve, I'm sorry for that misinformation that you received from my office. Um, yeah, that's. Makes makes life harder for for you. Um, but I would say that we have um. Two uh fact sheets on our website right now. I don't know if they were forwarded to you um before this meeting. Um, the one that deals with medical uh medical uh might be helpful to you and, you know, the the situation is that for. For medical marijuana establishments, you know, there there's no um opt-in, like provision for the unorganized territories.
Okay, there will be, uh, there's been several fact sheets out there. Are you talking about the one that's dated November two thousand twenty?
Correct, yeah, and it's on that that LUPC website now, under our brochure section.
Steve, that's one you should be looking at. That's the most current, and and we have the most current. And it's at the last paragraph on that front in the first page where it talks about the no requirement for the commissioners to opt in for medical in in the UTs.
Okay.
I I must say that this is, you know, I I never knew about these these fact sheets. I I I did go to the LUPC. I mean, I didn't know where it was buried, and you read the law, and I see exactly how this happened to to Steve. The same thing happened to. Me, same thing happened to Millard, you know, we, this is, I mean. Put it bluntly, it's dysfunction junction. Nobody knows what what ways and and, you know, somebody who's trying to to comply doesn't know which way is up. So, um, you you know, I I just wanna make sure that this fact sheet. Is reflective of the legislation or the law because. I can't determine that it is.
Well, could we put both of these fact sheets on the Hancock County website?
You say, did we or can we?
Can we.
Rebecca?
Yeah, sure, we can do that.
Do that.
That might give people an easier access.
Well, and I mean, this is, one of the dangers in that is. Um, I'd love to put it on the website also, but. I think it's still, is this in fact a fact sheet? Because, you know, I'm not sure that. The law and this fact sheet jive, you know, I can't prove that they don't. I can't prove that they can. It it's, I mean, is this accurate? If we can get somebody from from LUPC or the Office of Marijuana Policy to say, yeah, that. That is in fact what the law is, great, let's put it up. But, you know, it it this is very, um, you know, we all made the same mistake.
Okay, so David, you unequivocally are saying that there is no requirement, or are we authorized to opt in for medical marijuana in the UTs? Is that correct?
So there is no requirement for the county commissioners to opt in um for a land use planning commission service area. So essentially, the unorganized or deorganized areas of the state. Uh, and that is because the definition of municipality that is contained in Title twenty two does not include the unorganized and deorganized areas of the state. The definition in adult use does, though, and you do have opt-in authority there.
Information is late in the process. Uh, I think today, as of this point, Paul, we can say that that is fact. That we're going to consider that we have no authority or responsibility to opt in for medical marijuana in the UTs in.
Well, and and quite honest, quite honestly, Steve, I'm I'm very sorry. I was under a different impression. I'm I'm sorry I had to go through this.
Quite all right. I'm glad we're on the right track now.
Well, I'm, again, uh, Steve was. Keen to us because he was interested solely in medical marijuana, but I still think that this, it's time for us. It came to us two years ago, as John said, and it's back now before us, that perhaps we take a position on adult use. And I'm wondering if if, gentlemen, are you willing to have a discussion about that and consider taking some action with regards to. What position we would take on any future request for adult use marijuana facilities?
I can comment on that. I I have, I I have been privy to, you know, having dealt with uh this in Bar Harbor. Um, and, you know, hearing from folks from other states, namely Colorado and uh police chiefs associations and sheriffs associate. Well, I'm not sure we heard from the ma- main sheriffs, but we certainly heard from the police chiefs uh association and and. You know, I um hearing all, being lucky enough to hear all that testimony, I I I have a strong position based on. Those recommendations and and uh. So for me, the discussion, you know, I. I don't feel that I need a bunch of discussion. I I I formulated an opinion. It's my opinion, and it's how I would vote.
Naomi, what percentage of the municipalities? First of all, some idea of how many have even acted on whether to opt in or out. Now, there's some municipalities that just haven't taken any any position yet.
Well, so first of all, if no position is taken, then then you're not opted in. It's out. There's no opt-out required. Um, I can't answer your question for municipalities. You know, my area of expertise is the unorganized and deorganized areas of the state. I'll let David um answer the question on municipalities, but in the unorganized and deorganized areas of the state, I'm not aware of any um townships. Plantations or towns in those areas that have opted in yet.
And no idea how many may have actually voted not to opt in? I know you don't have to, but I'm just wondering if some of them have discussed it and intentionally. Voted not to opt in?
Um, I do not know of any actual votes taken not to opt in. Um. Uh, I am aware that um the topic has been under discussion in Rangeli Plantation. Um, and the, you know, um, select board there um. Has um strong feelings on the subject, um, but I don't know that anything has come to a vote.
Naomi, do you know how many medical marijuana facilities there are in the UT statewide?
That I couldn't tell you right off the top of my head. I know that we have, you know, in the last five years or so, um, that I have been around watching permits come and go. I could name at least three that 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 we've dealt with, and some have been um on the scale of what we call home businesses. Um, and others on the scale of something that we would term, um, you know, commercial or industrial activity. Um, and that. That difference, you know, ma- it makes a difference where they can be located in terms of a zoning perspective. So at least a handful, but, you know, potentially more.
Mary Ann, your organization is involved in some kind of. Inspection process, correct?
The Main Sheriffs Association had been involved with medical marijuana inspections for several years. Um, we stopped that work uh at the beginning of two thousand twenty, and uh we've now contracted with the state in a new uh capacity. Also related to medical marijuana. That inspection process is very similar to the liquor compliance that we currently conduct. Um, that's where we send in, uh, you know, somebody that a staff member to attempt to purchase. Um, and along with the compliance regulations that are in place. So, you know, strictly medical marijuana, as far as the Main Sheriffs Association is concerned. And we have not yet begun that new compliance work. Um, we're still in the process of uh coordinating efforts and all of that.
Millard, our UT director made a comment, maybe on a couple of occasions and whatnot, wondering about how this was going to labor our law enforcement. In the unorganized territories. Do you have any, uh? Of course, our law enforcement up there is is shared with the state police and the sheriff's office, and you have any comment with regards to. Adding to the responsibilities, what that would be?
Well, Sheriff, I I have to tell you, my experience with medical marijuana has been um. Almost exclusively positive. Uh, I'm finding that the, and again, this is my experience. I find that those that have been out of compliance were eager to um to be to bring their operations into compliance. They've been. Uh, again, that compliance work was a little bit different than what we're doing now. The compliance work we did before was really related more to. Adhering to statute and um the laws around storage and selling and staffing and all those different complexities. Um, and I can honestly say there have been very few times when we found. Um, that our association or our staff members felt in any way that um the operators were. Or in any way confrontational or aggressive, we just didn't see a lot of that. We saw a lot of people really wanting to become compliant.
And your organization has no dealings with adult use facilities, correct?
Zero, zero, zero work with adult use at all.
So David, is there an inspection process similar to medical marijuana for the adult use facilities?
Yeah, so one of the reasons why the Office of Marijuana Policy actually contracted with the Main Sheriffs Association was because of just a a lack of staff support on our end initially. Um, the Office of Marijuana Policy, actually, I guess I should back up a little bit. Before OMP even existed, there was a main medical use of marijuana program. And they had two full-time compliance field investigators, and they were supplemented by part-time Main Sheriffs Association field investigators. Um, our compliance team is now ten people strong, um, and we have a robust and proactive compliance-first inspection program. And we have a robust and proactive compliance-first inspection program in both the adult use and the medical use marijuana program.
One clarification, David, if I may. What you contracted with the M S A because you were short-staffed and our exemplary history working. Wow, wow. Just clarification.
Get that plug in there, Mary Ann. David, back to my question on adult use. Is that same inspection team involved in adult use inspection as well as they have medical?
That's correct, yes. We actually, as a result of the adult use program essentially launching, we have developed a pre-compliance inspection check where we go into establishments before they actually receive an active license from the Office of Marijuana Policy. And then continue to check with them on an ongoing basis over the course of the year.
How much law enforcement activity is there with regards to adult use facilities?
It really is a local question. You know, the Office of Marijuana Policy is a compliance-focused organization. We don't have a law enforcement component. So, you know, some municipalities, as an example, will task their local law enforcement agencies with engaging in some inspections and things of that nature prior to receiving local authorization. Those local law enforcement agencies would also be responsible for any illicit or criminal activity that is occurring in those establishments. But as Mary Ann alluded to, you know, there is a vested interest in both medical registrants and in our adult use licensees in ensuring that they're compliant with the state law and with our program rules. As an example, you know, I think we may have issued any, maybe three to five revocations of the medical program last year. Because we always attempt to educate and provide technical assistance with our licensees. But in an egregious situation where there was a willful violation of law that could be viewed as a criminal issue, that would be when we would refer the issue to law enforcement for investigation and potentially prosecution.
Naomi, for the unorganized territories, is it just a lack of attention to adult use opting in? Or was there just no effort made or at least no affirmative action taken to do it? In other words, can you tell me why there are no adult use facilities in the unorganized territories around the state?
So there, none of the county commissioners, in the case of townships or towns or plantation legislative bodies, have opted in in the unorganized territories as yet.
Are you aware, are you aware that this has been discussed, has been considered, it's been sidelined? I mean, I'm, I'm trying to understand why. I can't believe that we are the first county commissioners to consider whether or not we want to opt in. I'm just curious as to what, what taking place in the other counties that have unorganized territories. Millard, yeah.
Don't you think this has something to do with location and population? There are no wall mats anyways in the UT. If you want to sell adult use marijuana, you want to be located closer to a population hub, I would think.
Well, you know, considering there was a strip joint between Midway and East Millinocket. I'm thinking that, why wouldn't there be a adult use marijuana facility, the same facility? I mean.
Yeah, if you, if you build it, they will come?
Well, I'm just curious. I mean, it doesn't sound like Penobscot has been faced with that. And I'm just curious as to if Naomi had some idea as to, as to why we're, there, there is none. I don't know if there's an answer to that question.
I mean, I know it's been under discussion, certainly in some, in some cases. I have been corresponding in the last year with select people from Sandy River Plantation and Dallas Plantation. I know they have had, they have had interest. And townspeople have put forward, or property owners have put forward plans and asked for opt-in, but, but it hasn't, it hasn't occurred yet. So, I, I, I don't monitor all of the county commission meetings for, for all of the unorganized territories. So I can't tell you exactly what's going on. I know there have been discussions, say in Arustic County, because I've, I've talked with the county commissioner manager up there. But, you know, to date, there have been no opt-ins for adult use in the unorganized. And, you know, it hasn't been that many months since the actual, the, the, the Office of Marijuana Policy actually began issuing licenses. So it could be that, that, you know, county commissioners and legislative bodies didn't, didn't really want to get ahead of things until there were, you know, the actual rules in place. But now the rules are all in place. And as far as I know, the O M P is issuing licenses. So there may be, there may be more interest and pressure now to make such decisions. But like we've mentioned before, you don't have to opt out. That's sort of the, the base.
And we, we've understood that, yeah, we've understood that from the start. Again, though, gentlemen.
Okay, I got a question.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
All right. So I'm not sure if it's Naomi or David that would answer it, but so I just kind of wondered. Let's say hypothetically, we did opt in for some version of the adult use. What is, what were the, what further responsibilities and obligations do, does the county have at that point? Or does it go to the L U P C from there and that's it?
Naomi, do you want me to try to take that one?
I, I was a little unclear on the question that if, if you guys opted out.
If we opted in on one of, on one of them. What, what, what further obligations or management does the county itself have to do?
Sure. Why don't I take a crack at it, David, and then you can, you can jump in for any, any other points that need to be made. So should, should the Hancock County Commissioners opt in for some or all types of adult use marijuana establishments? For some or all of the townships in Hancock County? Then, um, when a person comes along and wants to actually start a business in one of those townships, they have to go through additional hurdles, one of which, of course, is to get an L U P C permit, development or land use permit, where we will evaluate the zoning and such. And the other one is to get a local approval from the county commissioners for their particular establishment. And that local approval can consider anything that does not have to do with land use planning and development. But it can't be sort of a consideration of, you know, the location, because that's something that comes under the purview of the L U P C. So that that person that wants to start an establishment, they'll have to get both approvals from either a permit or license, whatever you choose to call it, from the Hancock County Commissioners and permit from the L U P C before they can then go to the O M P and get their final active D A C A license.
So was that, is that similar to an amusement permit? I mean, or your, your, whatever? Is that what you're talking about, Naomi? Or, or what specifically, or Millard, maybe you can tell us, what, what permit would they be seeking for us for a business permit in a, in the UT?
I guess your idea of the, the liquor license would be similar. They would get their permit from L U P C to build a structure and for the commercial use. Then they would come to the county commissioners for the approval for the liquor license. And then it would have to go to the state for final approval. And this is similar, the three-step process. They get the permit from the L U P C, then they get, come back and get approval from the county commissioners, and then it goes to the O M P for final approval.
And the L U P C does have a fact sheet on adult use marijuana as well, in which I've laid out sort of a six-step process for getting your business going in the unorganized territories in terms of licensing and permitting and approvals.
And I see that in, in item three there, where it talks about required by the county commissioners approval. So John, your answer is, is that we never really get, can wash our hands of this, you know? Even if we, if we elect to opt in, we're, we're still going to have to deal with each individual enterprise that wants to have a, an adult use facility.
I hear what you're saying, but I mean, I'm not to, not to be too sarcastic about it, but it's kind of, again, like, I mean, we know that there's not going to be too many applications for, you know, facilities in the UT, because there really isn't that. It's, it's very questionable where somebody's going to be able to establish, whether it's retail or cultivation or processing and testing. So, yeah, I guess there's a chance that every year we could see a couple people come before us wanting to, wanting to apply. And we can, I know that in some areas, like in towns, they'll make a limit on how many they're going to approve, right? So I mean, in that sense, even though we'd be opting in on something, you still have total control over it. You can still say, no, you're, it's, you're not, you're not approved. So we're not like giving up the ghost here and open up some floodgates for some mythical marijuana industry that's going to be coming into the Hancock County. So that's.
You know, we as a board though, have kind of tipped our hand on how we, you know, our personal philosophies. And I think it would be misleading to the public for them to believe that if they want to have an adult use facility, they can apply to the county for a public hearing and we would act on that request. And I'm saying that that may be misleading because Paul and I have both stated our personal philosophy against having adult use facilities. And I can't imagine what I'm going to hear from an applicant that would change that. So I'm just wondering if we aren't providing a better service to the public by today by having a motion made and seconded to allow for opt-in and then voting that down.
Didn't that take place in December?
No, that's, we've never, we've ne- We.
It wasn't seconded.
It wasn't seconded. So there was a motion made and.
At least, well, maybe I'm wrong.
No, the motion, yeah, no, I think you're right, John. The motion was made. Well, wait a minute. Did you, did you second that and then we voted it down?
That's what I thought happened, but.
Trying to remember to be honest.
The whole, the whole gist of that was is that we really had scheduled a hearing. We told the public that we would have a hearing.
Yeah.
And we didn't want to act on that until after we had the hearing, which is what we're having today.
Yeah.
So I think the message there was is that we're not going to really take action on this until we've discussed this thoroughly with the proper resources. And I'm suggesting today that we've, I've heard all I need. And I'm prepared to make a motion to opt in for all four uses for adult use in the, in all of the unorganized territories and then act on that motion.
Somebody's seconding it or is it dying?
The motion is to opt in for all four categories in adult use for all of the unorganized territories in Hancock County.
Oh, it's dying for lack of a second. I have a question for Naomi and David. And that's, is there a upside to opting in before you have a viable applicant? Or I don't see that. And if we did have an applicant, would we be obligated to, you know, if we were to reverse this, we haven't taken any action? If we have an applicant, or do we have an obligation to hear that applicant?
It's really a philosophical, excuse me, philosophical question. You know, when the Office of Marijuana Policy issues a conditional license, there is not a requirement that the applicant identify a host municipality or, or a community that they intend to set up shop in. So, you know, in theory, if it's clear that Hancock County is a viable location, you know, they could start looking ahead of time for parcels or tracts of land where they may wish to establish their business. It would also speed up the process to a degree if they didn't have to lobby the county commissioners to opt in to allow their business. But when it comes to the local authorization component, you know, the, the town, or in this case, the county commissioners on behalf of a township, would have to have affirmatively opted in before a local authorization could actually be properly received by the L U P C.
Okay, so having said that, like a liquor license, it's, you know, mostly a formality. You know, let's say that we opted in for some, you know, and then somebody came. We can't just say no because we don't like it or whatever, because we've decided to opt in, right? So it's, in that instance, it's similar to, to a liquor license where you can't say no unless you have reason to say no.
Well, formally speaking, the statute says that they may not request local authorization unless the community has opted in. But that certainly doesn't stop individuals from lobbying the legislative body to take an action that would be favorable to allowing them to locate in a municipality or, or in this case, a township.
Okay, I had, that's a very good point. Thank you.
No, I think that would be a real disservice to the public though, for us to opt in having a deep philosophical belief that we wouldn't approve it if they did apply to L U P C.
I agree. That's why I asked that question.
Yeah. So I mean, if, if you wouldn't approve their application after they applied to L U P C after the fact, then we should let them know that before the fact. Don't waste your time looking for a, you know, a location. Don't waste your time on the, on the application process with L U P C because we, we are philosophically opposed to having adult use facilities in our UTs. So.
So I know you guys have your minds made up. But I do want to say, you know, we've spent a bunch of time this last year trying to figure out how we're going to get some businesses in the UT, right? Talking about the loan program, using TIF money. So, well, I kind of find it funny that we look at this and we're like, marijuana, and we start clutching our pearls about it. And, oh my gosh, we can't have that. If you got a, somebody who's starting a business and it was a micro brewery, wanting to start in the UT, oh, you'd be all excited about it. And we'd be approving a liquor license probably. Or what if they were just doing a microbrew and they weren't going to have any, they weren't going to sell it out of it, but they're going to make the beer there? So there's a real, I mean, I think it's really old school, to be honest, to look at it and see the marijuana is somehow different than a liquor license. I mean, I don't, I, I, I don't think there's one person on this Zoom call that hasn't had alcohol negatively affect their lives through their self, their family members. I mean, pretty much devastating. So pretty much a horrible drug. But as a society, we decided this one's acceptable. And same thing with tobacco. I mean, my father was an alcoholic and my mom, I remember holding her hand as she took her last breath as a smoker. So I understand how drugs affect lives. I get it. But to try to pretend that marijuana is somehow this bugaboo that's worsened these already, these already established norms in society. I, I mean, I just, I mean, I understand where you're going with it, but I just think you're on the wrong side of it. And the, quite frankly, the cat's already out of the bag. So I mean, you can't drive anywhere and not find a, somebody who's opened up a medical, medical marijuana spot. I mean, they're all over the place. And pretty much you don't need anything to be able to get a medical marijuana, marijuana. And pretty much you don't need anything to be able to get a medical marijuana 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 card. I mean, it does take anything. So. I think it's, I think it's a little. I don't, I mean, I think you understand my point on it. Obviously. My feelings on approving anything for the U T, like I said, I think it's, you're probably not going to have anybody apply for any of these. But if you did have somebody who wanted to open up a cultivation facility in a spot that was that worked in the U T. I don't know if any any place would work there, but it'd be kind of a shame to not help encourage a business. And if you didn't, if you're opposed to retail establishments, I get that. Don't approve retail and do the testing, processing and cultivation, which is essentially like a manufacturing options. So that's, that's my feelings on it. That you that I would. Not vote for the retail, but encourage the cultivation, processing and testing for the U T.
John, you did it very eloquently and which you you're capable of doing, but it's still an emotional issue. And and I I think of other things. What if they wanted to? What if they wanted permission to establish an abortion clinic in Plantation Eight? You know, I mean, you can just, there are so many things that well up the personal emotions in people and and. I told you why, you know, with forty three years in law enforcement and 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 that's I just, it's so difficult for me to get into the twenty first century. When it comes to pot. So I'm I'm sorry about that if that's that's anti-business. But I can't help how emotional I become over some of those issues. Sheriff, did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
Well, I had a couple of questions. I'm I'm under the impression that municipalities that opt in. For adult use, they receive a portion of the tax revenue. Is that correct? Can someone answer that question for me?
So there is no direct municipal revenue sharing at present with tax proceeds. Except for the state's normal treasurer's cash pool and then revenue sharing pool that distributes the funds. Other than that, it's just simply sales tax collected goes into the big pot and is distributed among all of the towns in the state regardless of their opt-in status. But there are legislative proposals that would take a portion of the proceeds from sales and or excise tax and direct those back to host municipalities. But that's all they are at this point is proposals.
And Sheriff, if you understand the county's relationship with U Ts, the state collects the revenue through income tax, property tax, whatever. And then they pay us to manage them. And so we're we're simply, we don't. Well, that's the difference between a municipality who has the governance, total governance over the municipality. We simply manage and provide services and those services can only be services that the state doesn't already provide. So because they have L U P C, we can't provide land use permitting or regulation. So.
I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
No, I I get that, but I I wasn't clear. I couldn't remember if the municipality, is it where I was going with that? If in fact that that was that, would the county get revenue from that? And would that revenue offset the cost if we had to hire another officer? I I mean, none of us can look into the future into a crystal ball and see how many kind of complaints are, but I do know nationally, there are a lot of. There are a lot of studies and a lot of reports out there that said that it's increased dramatically the demand for law enforcement services. And I mean, let's be honest, these these areas are very, very remote. And the squeaky wheel gets the gets the grease. In other words, we spend more time in in communities or areas where we get more complaints. And and right, wrong or indifferent, we don't spend a lot of time in the unorganized territories for those reasons. But if if in fact this was here and started generating more complaints, it would be more difficult to to cover those complaints. And with what's going on statewide as far as call sharing agreements, we do know that that the state police changed their philosophy on that. And and I, every day I expect to have a phone call saying that we're not going to, we're not going to be involved in call sharing whatsoever. So I'm just looking ahead to what it would, what it would cost the county and what it would mean as far as we need to hire another person. Where would those funds come from? Those types of things. So that's why I asked a question about, does it generate any income?
Well, I can tell you, Scott, Sheriff, that the. David has told us, no, there's no direct reimbursement back based upon that, but Millard can also elaborate on. A few years ago, we tried to assess law enforcement fee to the U Ts and that was rejected. So we're not getting anything for services over and above what the U Ts pay in in property tax like municipalities do.
A year or so ago about this and we had a very brief conversation. He had already submitted his budget and so forth and so on, but I do know that there are counties. That are reimbursed for coverage in law enforcement coverage in the U Ts. Is that still correct, Millie?
The the one that I was aware of, and I don't remember what year it was, Arustic County applied for. Included it in the U T budget to law enforcement and it was defeated by the Bureau of Taxation. I'm not aware of any others.
Oxford County, for some reason, sticks in my head. Does it, does that ring a bell, Millie? Does that anything that?
I'm not aware of that one.
Sean, did you ever?
We mailed out, we mailed out letters, questionnaires, I think it was two years ago. And the response back was about fifty fifty as far as whether they want, people wanted development in the unorganized territories. Or they wanted it to remain the same. But I think if on that questionnaire, there had been a question about marijuana, we would have got an entirely different response.
What do you think that response would have been, Millie?
I would have think it would, it would probably would have been seventy five, twenty five as far as people that did not want to change.
Go ahead, Paul.
I just wanted to respond to to John's comment. I I understand his point. I don't agree with it. But you know, that's why there's, that's why there's three of us with differing opinions, you know, I. I I I don't think I'm being a hypocrite, you know, for my position. I I think, you know, it's a sum like John, it's a sum of our life experience and and what we've heard. And and I respect that point and I I, you know, ask that, you know, others do the same. There's, there's going to be differing opinions. I have a strong opinion. It is what it is. It's, you know, if. You know, if people don't agree with it, then, you know, I won't be here next time. So, you know, I. We need to respect each other's opinions and and just, you know, if this passes, great, we move on. If it, if it doesn't, we move on. I I I think we're just belaboring. You know, we're going around in a circle here and I think it's time to move on.
Okay, so the record's going to reflect that a motion was made and it failed for lack of a second to opt in. And. With regards to the discussion, I want to thank David, Naomi and Mary Ann for joining us this morning. Appreciate that. Steve, you're, you've been set on the correct course for addressing your your endeavor. Good luck to you. Is there anything else with regards to this issue?
No, and I I really want to, you know, thank David and Naomi and everybody who participated and and, you know. We're sorry we led you down the wrong path, Steve, but good luck.
John, you all set?
Yep, I'm all set.
Okay, again, thank you very much, Mary Ann. It's also good to see you again. Take care of yourself. Then we're going to go back to the. Commissioner's agenda. At this time, I entertain a motion to go in executive session to discuss a personnel issue. Motion made and seconded to go in executive session to discuss the personnel issue. All those in favor? Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. We're now in the executive session. And we're out of it now, Rebecca.
Yes.
Back on the public record. We have nothing to report with regards to the executive session that we just had. And gentlemen, that completes our agenda for the day. Our next meeting will be. February second. Any idea, Rebecca, what that's looking like yet?
It's looking like a, it's looking light right now, but I expect that will. Yeah, I expect we'll probably have some action from maintenance and probably from. You know, the DA's office in terms of new hires and that sort of thing. Maybe there'll be some other shuffling of employees. I'm not sure. But other than that, I don't see anything.
I I'm not. I'm not comfortable in in that discussion we had last time with regards to the agenda items under the treasurer's office. If we really refine what we want to see from them. What we're going to be looking for in having available to us during our regular meeting.
I'm sorry, do you mean the reports?
Yeah, reports. What what's got to be generated? You know, considering the fact that Pam's there alone and depending upon Scott perhaps or you, somebody. Have we, have we taken enough proper steps yet to limit the documents that we need to see? Especially now that we have access to Trio and we can look at balances and so on.
As long as, as long as we can find everything we need. Right now, Scott, are we able to, I haven't tried, am I able to log back into the web trio? They pretty much stayed out of it while everything's been going on.
Oh, yeah, no, we've, most of the updates now have been able to not not force us to get out. So, yeah, I was in there yesterday for, you know, as I said, for several hours and moving things back and forth between the gears. And, you know, there's still some little, there's a couple of little bugs still in it, things to work out, but it seemed to behave. Especially the work I was doing, if it, if it's going to, if it's going to have any issues. It seems to be able to handle the complex stuff. It's some of the simplistic stuff that, you know, they just seem to be, be, I know, refined to.
I think one of the things Commissioner Clark was talking about is, I think you thought that maybe there was a better. We had questions about the. That one report, the one that has the, you know, past dues on it.
Oh, the E R, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know if you think there's something better that we should be looking at. Maybe you can, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I'll just, what I'll probably have to do is if you want that silver airways on there, I'll probably have to make some sort of of an adjustment. In order to make that happen, whether it be manual or or in the system, but.
Yeah, I I tried to log in. I I have not logged in successfully, but I I. It's because of all the stuff that's going on. I I'm so green, I don't, I don't know what I'm looking at. I'm sort of relying on your summaries and our conversations and so there's a learning curve there. And then my last question was E M D C, I, you know, all I've read is what, you know, has been provided here. But I guess I need a better handle on what they do and what kind, how much funding we give them and, you know. That kind of stuff. Where where's the best way for me to study that? Or the best place to study that?
I can, I can send you, I can send you a page of the budget. That has some historical information if you want to see like the years that. The years that we've contributed to and how much.
Yeah, and I just don't understand the role, you know, my comments earlier about, you know, the the conflict that I that. I see this same as Commissioner Clark. I, you know, I don't, I just don't know whether that's my thinking is valid there. Or what, you know, or what the working relationship is. It sounds like they do so many things that it's hard to get.
Yeah, let me send you, actually, let me send you their their application for probably maybe the last couple of years. Because that will have some historical payment information there. I'll double check and it's usually accurate. Because they're asked to list that. And then it also, you know, it's a little presentation of what they do and the numbers for the county and the services they provide. So, yeah, I'll do that.
Yeah, if if that's easy, I'd appreciate that.
Yep, I might even have it in a scan file.
Well, we never got a a a report from a representative over the years. I don't recall ever hearing a report on on what. Our representative did at these meetings. So I'm not even sure what we would be obliging ourselves to do by attending those.
I kind of feel like occasionally, occasionally Aunt would bring up something that was going on there. I mean, I forget there was different, you know, kind of like when we were talking some about. Trying to figure out how we were going to get some planning when the planning commission was gone. So things like that, I think, came out of some of his experience on the board. And talking with them and finding out what they're, so I think that did, that was a little bit of. One of the advantages of him being on the board then. But, and you know, I'm on, I'm on the N W, the Northwest Development Board, so. So I'm on the, I'm on the board with Joanne. Joanne is board. As the elected official, as the elected official on it. So like each county has a commissioner on it.
So that's the same, that that was half of our presentation.
Yeah, yeah. So that's why I was kind of, I mean, a little bit like, I'm on a board too there. We're not, right now, we're not currently giving them money, but we have in the past. But that grant that they kept on referring to was a welcome relief that we had when we were about to go into discussions at Department Seventeen. Because we weren't going to have to make the decision whether we were going to cut it or not. So, because they had the funds to kind of keep it going on their own, which was great.
Okay, yeah, I just, I I I was sort of baffled by, you know, it was hard for me to delineate one from the other.
Paul, would it be helpful if you had perhaps the last, I don't know if they'd give us those, but the last couple of minutes of their meeting? So you could understand what the, what they're doing and what what a representative would be. Involved in?
I probably could go on a website, you know, I'll look at their website and, you know, the other thing is, it sounds like a. You know, I remember a couple of reports, you know, when I was on the town council from from Commissioner Blasey. On E M D C and it it sounded like, you know, close to a, you know. A part-time job, you know, it sounded like it was, I thought they met twice a month and and, you know, for a half a day. And, you know, that would be very tough for me to do.
So when I, some of the, like, some of the, I usually only do like the quarterly meetings. For the workforce, but even before COVID, they did those. I, half the time I had to call in and do it that way anyway. So I don't know what. What their story is, but you never know, you might not have to be traveling up to Bangor to be at the meeting and be listening to the meeting and be able to participate. And I would think post-COVID, none of this, I think we're, everything's going to be zoomed, even if people are going to be there in person. I think it's still all going to be zoomed because people are just used to it now and on a board it takes, to me, it makes total sense. So I wouldn't think you, you're not going to, I don't, you're not going to have to, I can't imagine you're going to have to be driving up to Bangor. I'm not telling you what to do. I just, yeah. Practical side of it.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to go over this. So. Can I move to adjourn?
Yep, I think that'd be appropriate. Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. Good day, gentlemen.
Thanks, everybody.